The Queens Jewish Link presents the Jewish Living Podcast. The show that examines the many facets of Orthodox Jewish life. Here's your host, Izz Ozzwirin.
Happy Election Day, everyone. Hopefully you have plans to fulfill your civic duty today, or perhaps you have done so by the time you were listening. Well, here at the Jewish Living Podcast, we thought it would be beneficial to highlight an area of politics that up until very recently does not really occupy a large area of coverage in the minds of Americans. School boards, yes, local politics. While national politics get the most headlines, often the local elections can have a more outsized impacts on you. That's why we invited this week's guest.
My name is Gavi Hoffman, and I'm a trustee with the West Hempstead Union Free School District.
Gavi will get into the heart of some of the key issues private school parents face when running for local school boards, how to be successful in a campaign, and how Orthodox Jews can be impactful without coming across as looking to deplete the district of resources. All right, Gavi, thank you so much for joining me today. I want to get a little bit into a background on you, not into like your personal life, but seriously just about the being a member of the school board of your local community. How did that come about? Why did you do it? Why would you subject yourself to putting yourself through, whatever it is you had to put yourself through? Basically, why are you a member of your local school district?
It's a good question because not everyone knows the history front. And one thing I'll say upfront is everything I'm going to say is my own personal opinion. It's not reflective of the board. It's not reflective of anyone else there. It's just my own personal opinion because that's part of it. And I'll sure we'll get to that later.
Oh, yeah.
But really, to be quite honest, I'd always wanted to get into politics as a way of serving the community. And that's always been important to me. Every member of my family has some form of volunteerism in them. And politics was a big thing for me. And while the bigger politics have been a lot messier recently, for me, local politics is really where it starts. We're helping your community know the people you're interacting with. Working with specific people to work on specific problems is something where I felt I could really make a difference. And once I saw that there was an opportunity in the community to really bring a voice to some areas that I didn't feel were getting represented properly, I jumped at the chance.
And of course, when we have local politics, people understand how politics have an effect on their lives. But the more localized you get, maybe the greater effect it might have on someone's life. So when you're talking about federal versus state versus city, maybe down to the local school board, how much does what happens on the school board affect regular residents' lives?
It's a great example because we actually live, you and I, in the largest special interest district in the country.
Explain what that means.
That is, so there are these little districts throughout the country that are usually water or sanitation. Sanitation District Six is the biggest special district in the country.
In terms of population or area?
In terms of population.
Population.
And it's one of those things where you just like, your garbage getting picked up, little things, recycling all those things like that. How does that affect me? What do I get charged for? And while you don't really think about it most of the time, school is one of those things where it affects you a lot more than you realize. Of course, taxes, I'm pretty sure everyone knows about the taxes aspect. But the school board dictates a lot of important things about the policies within the area. And whether your kids get busing, whether they're, how money is allocated.
Services.
Services, whether services are approved or not. And while those aren't done by policy, it is very impactful to them on how these things are done.
And that affects people if you send your kid to public school or if you send your kid to private school or parochial school or any of the other options of school out there. Like, your school board might have a say in that.
Yeah, when you think about how the school board has an impact, there are things that they're required to do by law. But there's also things that they're involved with that you don't really think about. So when a school board has to pay for busing, a school board has to pay for books, those are things that you think about. There are other things that you don't think about when it comes to the teachers that they hire and how they educate within the community. The special ed teachers who might go to other schools within the district, whether they're parochial, whether they're private, those have an impact on the services that are being provided for your students. Not just whether they get it, but also how they're provided and how good the support is for them.
So the reason that we have you here this week is really to delve into how from people can get involved in their school board, their local school boards, without necessarily alienating people that might be resistant to putting them on. I know in a lot of communities out there, they have kind of a very combative relationship between a from community and the local school board. And it gets worse sometimes when a local member of the from community gets put on that school, on that school board. But what I've been able to observe from you is that it's not how you went about doing it, and that's not how you're working on it. And we're going to get to more of that stuff later in the conversation. But I just wanted to frame the whole conversation that we're having now around that, that point, that target.
So one thing I'll say is that we spend our lives in many occasions reacting to how other people react to us and spending our time thinking about the causation. And I don't know if you remember when I ran, but there was definitely not a yay, everyone on board, train Gavi when I ran. There were people who were against it. There were people who were going with the standard. He's going to cut the public schools and cut all the funding and everything like that as a generic, not true statement. And I went forward because I knew what was best for this community. And so while there may be opposition, if you're doing it for the right reasons and you will eventually win over the people by showing that you have your head on straight and you're operating the right way, the pushback shouldn't be the reason that you don't run.
That was eloquent.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to, I want to just get a couple of things out of the way beforehand.
Sure.
Can you tell me a little bit about the demographics of the district in terms of how many, the percentage of people in this district that are going to send to yeshivas versus sending to a public school? And maybe if you have some numbers about how many kids are in the public school system in your district?
So most of the numbers I have are from a few years ago in terms of the split. But it's relatively the same in terms of split. We unfortunately don't have numbers broken down by family. That's not a thing. It's number of children. So if you have more children in the family, which from community members normally do, it's not exactly like that, but it's almost a 50/50 split. It's not exactly, it's a little more to the private, uh, public school. But it's very close to a 50/50 split. Last time I looked up, in terms of number of children who go to private school and number of children who go to public school. And that's private school across the board.
It's not just yeshivas.
Not just yeshivas. It's, we have a number of private schools in the area that our children are sent to. And it is almost a 50/50 split in that way.
And what about on the school board itself? Parents who, I didn't say parents, it could be anybody in the community, but people who send their kids to public school versus kids who don't?
A 50/50 split.
50/50 split right now.
Right, because I answered the question the way I wanted to, which is there's only two people in the district right now who have kids in school.
Okay. So there's only two kids, only two parents.
Two people.
Two parents.
Two parents.
With kids.
Whose parents are still in the district.
Whose kids are still.
Meaning there are people who have graduated and moved on. But right now, there are only two people who have children in the district.
And if we add in, and if we add in all those who used to have kids in the school district, how, what's the split of private versus public?
I think, I'm trying to remember if anyone from the current, the old board used to have people who'd send some of their kids to private school. But I think of the board members we have right now, it's six to public and seven to private. My seven being myself.
Okay. And yeah, I was going to ask you, and you yourself send to, send to private schools.
I do.
Okay, so I want to first touch on, how common is it for a parent of non-public school children to be on the board of a district? Now, you just said that it was seven to six. But if you were, I don't know if you can extrapolate this through the entire country or to local districts that you know of otherwise, what do you think the split is maybe nationally, maybe locally?
Can't speculate.
Can't speculate.
I have no clue. It's just, it's not something I would know about. And I'm sure there are districts where it's heavily private. And I'm sure there are districts where it's heavily public. I couldn't speculate.
Okay, all right. So with all those things out of the way, the background, the understanding about the community, the understanding about your specific board, I want to talk about first how you got elected. So I wanted you to talk about maybe the tactics of the private community, the from community, more specifically, in the past of how they went about running a campaign versus maybe your particular strategies on how to do so.
So I generally make it a point that I did during my campaign to not comment on any other campaigns. Even after getting elected, people asked me my opinion on the two elections since then. On any candidate, I don't comment on other candidates. I don't think it's appropriate as a sitting board member to comment on their campaigns. And when I ran, it was about my election. So I can tell you about how I ran, and I'm fine definitely addressing that, which is, and this is something that I would say for any involvement, is to get the facts straight, is to understand the issues at hand and understand your district and understand the people whose votes you're going for. I spent a lot of time researching a lot of different issues. I read books by people who are major union supporters. I read books and articles by people who weren't. I read books on different issues. I read articles on different issues. I researched through the New York State Education Department or the, you know, the SED as it's known, to understand the issues. And the way I ran was to talk about the things that I knew about, the things that I could speak to and the specific improvements I was looking to do. Those were the things that were important to me. And those issues were the ones that I was able to speak to. I'll give a good example that has, in many communities, is a, one of those things that people aren't necessarily aware of. So pre-K, big thing out there. And some communities are opposed. It's a waste of our money. Why are we paying for this? And some communities are, yes, free pre-K. This is awesome, fine, whatever. And that came up during my campaign. And, and I had done the research to say that universal pre-K, at least at the time, and based on the studies I had read, the results were kind of out. It's not clear. A lot of people like to tout that it works every time. And now that we've had enough time to see the results of universal pre-K, it's not as positive as people say. It's not that it's bad for students, but a lot of them catch up by, I think, a second or third grade. The results are about the same as kids who didn't go to universal pre-K. So when I was asked about it, I'm in favor of it. But I'm in favor of it with a, to kind of do a trial, right? Let's see if this is working for us. Let's see if it's not. You know, it's important to understand that some, a lot of this stuff's not black and white. To understand the nuance is a big part of being involved in any issue. And school board has so many issues, the nuances could go on forever. So being able to also say, I just don't know. I'll look into that for you is also a big part.
I don't want to get into a whole combative thing about universal pre-K. I'll just ask one question based on what you just said. If you wanted to implement it as a trial, how do you eventually, if you see that it's not working or it's not working as much as it should for the price tag that it comes with, how do you then take that away? Because it becomes kind of a thing that people, parents might expect at that point.
Yeah, and that's the kind of trouble you run into anytime you give a benefit. We can speak about other things that are very similar, but I won't. Where, where, you know, once people come to expect it, that's definitely the case. But from my, it doesn't mean that it's not something I would be willing to try just because people would be opposed to it and people might come for my head. My, again, we're not actually doing a trial, just to be clear with the universal, the pre-K that's coming up in this district soon. But one of the ways, you know, just because people are against it does not mean that I'm, I'm not going to act what I think is in the best interest of the students and the parents in this district.
Let's talk a little bit about your approach in terms of what other people might look at you and assume that you're trying to come in and change. So somebody from a public school background might look at you and say, oh, well, he's representing a community that doesn't send their kids to public school. And he's probably going to come in and tell us, well, we want to cut this and this and this because your community is not benefiting from those types of things. We, we want to spend money on athletics. We want to spend money on a new building. We want to spend a lot of this money that isn't really going to, going to benefit the community that you represent. So how do you kind of combat that notion? Or do you even combat that notion?
It's a good question. So when I, when I was thinking about these exact issues, my, I came down to the methodology of twofold, basically. I would engage on any questions that were done in good faith and some that weren't in good faith. But I would engage on the questions. I'd answer the questions for me. If people, I was an open book. I would allow people to engage with me. I met with, for coffee. Remember when that was a thing before COVID? We'd meet with people for coffee? It's crazy.
People?
Yeah, that's even right, more so. I would meet with people and I'd say, I'm going to get a cup of coffee with anyone to discuss the issues. And I did. And I met with, I think, three or four different people. I even got a nasty comment from someone that it was inappropriate that I said I'd go get coffee with them. Like, this is in public. It's not like, but that's, but people have their own agendas, right? And that's the second part, which is people are always going to have their agendas. People are always going to try and push their views on me. And I decided I was going to spend the time dispelling most of the inaccurate items about me. At one point, it got to, I remember one time back when I was on Facebook, which was when this was happening, there, there was like a thread that went crazy with a bunch of different things that just weren't true. It got to the point where I'm just like, I'm taking my hands off the keyboard. There's only so much time I can spend dispelling things that just aren't true. But I went into it also going forward on the issues I knew they, that people might have a misconception about. Oh, he doesn't want to have sports in the community. I, all joking about watching Friday Night Lights aside, I know that football's important to this community and to many of the public school communities. I know that athletics is a big part of it. I know that these issues are things that people are worried about. And to me, getting involved and making it clear that, no, that's important to me and I understand that. And I, I walk around the community wearing my West Hempstead Ram hat because although I don't go to the games because they're on Chabbis, it doesn't mean I don't support the teams and hope they win. It's, it was an important part of my campaign to make people understand that I was coming in merely with a different view, but that I supported the public schools. And I said that every time. I'm here to support every student, not just the public, the private school students. I'm here to represent both and I care about those issues. And those books that I had read ahead of time allowed me to talk to people about things they asked me about that were specific to the public school and that were important to them.
All right, so the way that it's coming across right now, at least to me, is that you really did a lot to push that you're not here to take things away. You're not here to, to remove things that are, that the public school community might hold dear. What are some of the things that you did come in and were kind of geared towards the community that isn't going to public school?
So my approach was less about things that aren't necessarily public school and things that apply to everyone. And yes, I also did things that are relevant to the private school. But my main focus was the idea that there are things that we could be doing in this district that will benefit all students, things which I have now accomplished in our district. One thing that I campaigned on was to get the board meetings broadcast publicly. And that's something that is important for people to get more engaged. I know that people don't want to get off their couches. I get it, they really don't. I've been to those meetings. All due respect to my colleagues there with that. They're not that interesting, except once in a while. They're pretty bland. And so to at least be able to watch it from your couch and see what's going on was important to me. And I'm happy to say that not only are our meetings livestreamed now, but they're livestreamed and recorded to watch later. I also mentioned the concept of doing, being able to ask questions in advance and have them read out. And that's also something that's happening now because it allows people to ask their questions in a public manner. There are people who want to hear public answers, not for grandstanding purposes. There are definitely people who want that too, but more that a lot of people have this question. The tennis courts recently was a question that came up before the board about why are the tennis courts not open? And now the tennis courts during the summer were open during the day for people to use. And is it because people asked in public? I don't know. But I do know that by bringing it up in public, people were able to hear the answers about what was going on. So that's something that affects everyone in this community, whether you send your kids to private school or to public school. That affects everyone. So when it comes to the, the private school parents, I think part of it was also bringing forward the viewpoint about how to include those, those students in other activities and things that might go on in the community that are relevant to them within the public school context. This year, the district held a kickoff barbecue that, that was invited everyone in the community, no matter where you sent your kids, including kosher food. So like, like it was a really nice event for anyone in the community who wanted to come. It was, it was just great because you know what? It's an inclusive environment. And it's a way of showing that there is a way to be involved with this community in the right way and that there's a way to think about, like, busing's a big thing around here, right? We keep, in this community and across the country, there's now a busing shortage. That is a major issue for private schools. And so coming onto the board, I'm able to bring the perspective of, there was once a person who brought up publicly the option of what's called centralized busing. Centralized busing would mean that everyone from one of the local schools, for example, what, local private schools would have to drop all their kids off at a centralized location. And then they would take them from the centralized location to the school because it would save them money on the stops. And it would save a lot of money. And if you send your kids to the public school, you don't have to worry about that. Not because it's an equal treatment, because the public schools are right here. Just, you can walk or get a drive. It's much easier. You don't have to worry about centralized busing. But if you kids go into the Five Towns or Queens, so now your parents have to be there to drive you to this other location, pick you up from it at the end of the day. That's a major private school issue that I was vehemently against. And I was not going to let that happen on my watch. Fortunately, it never became up really for an debate, debate, but it's one of those items that I had my eye on. The other thing that's worth mentioning, which people may not be aware of, is that the New York State calendar is set when it comes to the voting for school board. It is the third Tuesday in May. That's when it is. No one decided for any specific reason other than that's what it is.
And for our communities out there that aren't in New York, you have your own state.
Yeah, whatever your, I don't know what yours rules are.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I know Seattle, Seattle just had, is having their school board elections in November with the rest of their elections. So here in New York State, it's the third Tuesday in May. This past year, the third Tuesday in May was yeshivas. Not even the second day. So you're like, it was the second day, but you'd have to run to, I checked the time. I remember checking the time. It was, you would have, I think it was 11 minutes to run.
Wow.
And so I advocated for them to change the election date. And it's been done before. I can't remember many years ago, like something like nine years ago, it happened again. And the state let it happen. The state said, sure, we can, we will set an allowance. We'll let that happen. And I would say, due to my efforts, we were able to change the date to allow from people in this community to vote this year in the school board elections.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
My pleasure.
If there's somebody out there listening right now and they want to run for their local school board, but they don't want to run a contentious campaign, they want it to be civil, they want it to be, I want, something that you're talking about, I want to work with you, not against you type of a thing. Give some advice to those people that might be interested in getting into those positions.
So I think it varies by district. I really do. There, there might be districts where this is, you know, the norm. Like we talked about before, I don't know the breakdown. It might be really, it doesn't matter where you send your kids. But I could say if you're a district where there might be some contention, some of it's inevitable, right? Some of it, you're not going to be able to worry much about it. But I would say the biggest thing is to be educated. Spend your time understanding the issues, like I did. Understand what is going on and be transparent about you and what you believe. Saying that I was not 100% in favor of universal pre-K in that debate, I'm sure did not win me friends. I know for a fact it got me at least one vote because the person said, you quoted a study. No one else quotes studies. What do you mean? You read a study. You knew enough about the issue to say that there were studies. But I'm sure there are people who are like, why didn't he just say yes? Of course it's yes. Some people, why didn't he just say no? No, we don't agree with that. It's because I spent the time looking into the issues. There are some people who don't care about the issues. They just see you are a private school parent and have no interest in you. There are some people who see you, you're a private school parent. I'm definitely going to vote for you. But to be able to speak about the issues in your district that are relevant and being willing to have the conversation and not shy away from the topics of conversation. I went to the, the candidates forum and I spoke my opinion. I had those coffee talks with people, with people who were vehemently against me, clearly against me. And I was never going to win their votes. Two of the people I went with, no matter what I did, I was never going to win either one of their votes. Doesn't matter. Because my focus is I am who I am. My views are my views and I know what I know. Here's who I am, for better or for worse.
I would be, it would be remiss if we had you on here, had you on as a school board member and we didn't talk to you about some of the hot button issues that are going on nationally with school boards. So I am going to ask you firstly, has there been any situations where you've had in this school board[1442.46] has there been any situations where you've had in this school board where you've been harassed? Not necessarily because of your, your, you're Jewish. I'm talking about because you're on the school board. Have you had those types of situations? Has there been any cause for concern in your district for these things that we're seeing nationally?
No, we've, we have not, and I would say the state of New York, I just saw the numbers, I understand, I'm not going to misquote them, but they were significant, the, there are not that many incidents in New York State. New York State's not one of the places where a lot of this stuff is happening. I think there were one or two, like, things where it happened. But we're not the place where it's happening. I have never felt unsafe as part of the school board. We've never had anything other than contentious conversations, uh, using words that were civil and disagreement. And yeah, people get heated and people may say things they don't mean, but I've never felt unsafe or in any way similar to some of the situations of those other schools, boards out there.
All right, and then the other way, has there been discussions about some of the hot button issues? CRT, oh, sorry, for my listeners, critical race theory, and gender bathrooms, things like that? Are those things that are hot button issues in your district, or are those not really touched on?
I can't really speak to what's hot button issues to other people.
Right, I'm asking you about your district.
That's what I'm saying. Oh, to the people in our district, I can't really speak for what they consider hot button issues. I can only speak, so like, there has never been a meeting where we had people yelling and screaming and going crazy about CRT. That hasn't happened in this district. Have we had people voice their opinions on different issues? Absolutely. But we haven't had, in my recollection, any major of those kinds of issues become a thing. The closest we have is people who are upset about masks. And honestly, while we may disagree on some of the way the masks were done, I found 99% of the mask conversations to be civil. Disagreement, sure, but civil.
Right, and what about vaccines? If you want to talk about what's going on in your district about mandating vaccines for students now that, I think just today Pfizer announced that five-year-olds can, or the, the FDA approved for the, for five-year-olds?
So we follow the state guidance.
Okay.
So as of right now, the state has not mandated anything. We follow all state guidance when it comes to these items, as, when it comes to masking, when it comes to vaccines.
Okay. Is there anything else you want? Oh, no, wait. Why? I need to know, because you mentioned in the beginning, why are you called trustees and not board members?
Because I, I, I don't know my guess. This is a guess, is because you are, no, I don't know. It's a good question. I don't know.
All right, bring it up at the next board meeting.
That's the title, right. Why is it called trustee? I'm sure a Google search will give you the answer for those of you out there.
I think you should bring it up at the next meeting. It's a very important thing that one of my constituents asked me, why are we trustees?
I, I assume it has something to do with being trustee. No, I can't even guess.
Okay.
That's the official title is trustee. Well, even as a board member, it would be board member, but even that doesn't sound right. I feel like there's got to be some kind of title in there, right? Like, like if you're a member of the council, you're.
Board of Directors.
Board of Direct, I guess. I guess that's similar, because we are like a board of directors.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't know.
Not, not an important thing. Is there anything else that you would like to leave us with?
No, I, I think the biggest, the biggest issue I would always say in any of this is to understand the issues, even if you're not on the board. Right? We talked a lot about being on the board.
Yeah, but we should talk about the role of.
Yeah.
Of parents, the role of, even if you're not a parent, if you're just living in the community.
You should make your voice heard, right? There are respectful ways to give your voice to the community. Come to a board meeting, sit through the board meeting, and come and give your opinion. Bring your friends. Give their opinions. Well, you shouldn't give their opinions. They should give their opinions. Come, give your opinion, write an email, ask questions. You will be stunned by the amount of stuff that you either misunderstand, don't know about, or don't hear about. I'll, I'll give a really good example that has become, as for me, was an eye-opening understanding. We talk a lot about enrollment and how many students in the district and how many go to the school. What is not known is that one of the enrollment numbers that a lot of people reference is referring to students in the district that attend the public schools. And so they do the math and that's it, except that the district still has to pay for special ed services. And some people don't realize that some of these special ed schools cost over $100,000 a year. We think your tuition and yeshivas are high? $100,000 a year.
Wow.
And a district has to pay for that. But because the student doesn't go to our schools, they don't count in our enrollment. So if you want to count the numbers and do the real math, suddenly one student makes a huge difference.
Right, but that's, that's zero students costing $100,000.
$100,000, and that's one student. I don't know how many kids go to these other schools. Don't forget about busing and all, to the other, to these what's called BOSI schools. That is a fact that I had no clue about. And I learned myself by asking questions. It was merely just asking questions and saying, what is this thing? Or how do I understand that? Get involved and ask the questions. And you're, you're not going to get all the answers you like. I, I've gotten answers to questions I didn't like either. But if you don't even ask, you won't know. And if you don't speak up, they won't know that it's important to you. If there are a lot of, if there's an issue in your district that's important to you, why doesn't the district do this? Have you asked? Have multiple of you asked? Have you written emails? There's nothing wrong with a campaign to try and get people to understand how important an issue is to you, because that's how boards understand that it's something you care about. You shouldn't sway them necessarily to say, we're going to change our minds because there's a whole huge groundswell. But at least to understand how important it is, is a vital thing for you no matter where you live. And I would say that's at every level of government, especially as New Yorkers, both at the state senate and state assembly levels, that there is a amount to just say your opinion and make sure that your, your voice is heard. Because when a lot of people, a lot of people don't reach out to their elected officials.
Right.
So when they hear people who are reaching out, oh, wow, wow, we got to listen, because people took the time to write the letter, to send the, probably not write a letter, but send the email, make the phone call. These things make a difference. So get involved, ask the questions, and make your voice heard.
Phenomenal. Usually at this point, I usually ask my guests if they want to plug any of their social medias. I'm pretty sure you're notoriously not on social media very much.
Correct.
But I'm going to ask you to plug some of the reading material that you said that you looked up through when you were running. If there's any book out there that you think people might want to read or study out there that might be important that you want to share with us, and we could link to those in our social media, in our social medias and in the show notes.
I'll give you the most interesting one. How's that? I may not, as I've said to others, I didn't agree with everything in it. But I think the most interesting of the books I read that gave me a lot of perspective on unions and how schools operate was known as Reign of Error by, I think Diane Ravitch was her name?
Okay.
And Diane Ravitch is known as one of the most outspoken, uh, education-based people out there in this area. And so I made it a point to read her, what's known as her best book, at the time at least, was Reign of Error. So I'm like, okay, I'll read this one. And it's a lot about standardized testing, how good, you know, whether it's a good thing about it. Because standardized testing's a big thing, opting out, at least in the state of New York is a big thing, and it's a big topic that's come up. So I knew I had to brush up on the topic. So that was another reason I picked that. I would say that was one of the more interesting books, to try and understand some of the issues going on in public schools today.
Phenomenal. Gavi Hoffman, thank you so much for spending time with us today, and good luck in your campaign for your next election.
Thanks. Have a great race through your day.
My thanks to Gavi Hoffman for joining me this week. I thoroughly enjoyed this conversation, and despite Gavi pointing out how boring school board meetings can be, it made me want to attend one. If you would like to attend your local school board meetings, you'll probably be able to find a schedule on the board's webpage, or if they have one, their Facebook group. But if you do decide to go, remember to keep things civil. Until next week, call to.
The Jewish Living Podcast is produced by Shreli Pikas. Our theme song is "The Band" by AB Rottenberg. Follow us on Facebook at The Jewish Living Podcast, and on Twitter and Instagram at @jewish underscore living. You can also email the show at jewishlivingpodcast@gmail.com. The Jewish Living Podcast is recorded in conjunction with The Queens Jewish Link.
But my main focus was the idea that there are things that we could be doing in this district that would benefit all students. Things which I have now accomplished in our district.
Want to give an example?
Yeah, absolutely. I was about to. Cut that in or whatever you like, this really.